Thank you.
I now call the Abbeville City Council, meaning regular city council meetings on water, Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025, 5:30 PM. Kathy, please give me a roll call.
And Pastor Paul.
Here.
Pastor Womack Bruce-Or.
Here.
Councilman Bruce-Or.
Here.
Councilman Paul.
Here.
Councilman Hardy.
Here.
Mary Ellen Quorum.
Having a Quorum present, I'll ask everyone to stand for the prayer and the pledge. I'm gonna ask Pastor Riley to lead us in the prayer, please.
Dear Lord, we thank you so much for giving us this time to, to, uh, to be blessed, Lord. We thank you that you've given us this wonderful mayor and council. We ask you to bless them, bless their families. Thank you for the business that they tend to. Thank you for the great city of Abbeville. And we pray you, you bless the people, bless our churches. Just make, uh, make this city a blessing and use it for your glory. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
And it's my distinct honor to ask retired Sergeant Paul Hardy to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Constitution of America, and to the Constitution of this this is our law.
Thank you. Before we, uh, before we take up the agenda, a couple things. Housekeeping for those who are not aware, we are live streaming. The camera is up front at fans. If you want to speak or make a public comment, we're gonna ask you to come to the front and state your name for a record, for the record. We ask all public comments on agenda items be limited to three minutes and all presentations limited to seven minutes. Uh, if after your agenda item is taken up for business, if you'd like to leave, you are welcome to do so. We just ask that you do so quietly and not disruptive. And you can't exit out this door, you just can't come back in it. So, uh, that being said, I think we, before we take public comments, I know we have some amendments to the agenda. I'll, I'll hear those now. Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I have a motion to amend the agenda to discussion and possible action at 809 North Lamar.
Okay.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second for discussion and possible action of 809 North Lamar. Do, I need a unanimous, um, I need a unanimous vote in favor in order to amend the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motions, agenda, uh, agendas, sorry. I'm already three seconds now. Um, and then I also know we have another motion for deviation, right?
I'd like to move to deviating from the agenda to introduce a very special guest that's here this evening.
A second.
Motion in a second, we're gonna add in the presentations, item number three to recognize a special guest, as I said, retired sergeant Paul Hardy, retired from the US Army. So that's gonna be in a, in a few minutes, Mr. Hardy. So, um, I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is amended, that'll be item number three under presentations. Okay, that being done, we'll stop for public comments. Are there any public comments on any agenda item before we move forward? You'll also be able to present your public comments during the agenda items. Hearing none, we'll move on. Personnel, item number one, to accept the resignation of Maxia Hutchinson, billing specialist, effective October 31st, 2025.
A second.
I have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Ms. Hutchinson's been with us for seven years. It, I, it has been a pleasure working alongside her. I hate to see her go. Um, and, and she did turn in her resignation. She has offered to stay and train her replacement. I think last, when I checked last week, we had sixteen applications already for that position. I don't know where we landed, but, uh, we should be going through the testing of that position pretty soon, so. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, presentations, item number one, presentation of proclamation for Relay for Life of Bayou Country. Is someone here from Relay for Life?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I had asked whether you told me who was gonna be here and I didn't.
Oh, that's okay.
Can I come up here?
Sure.
Denise Turner, it's on the plaque. Proclamation, Relay for Life of Bayou Country. American Cancer Society Relay for Life Proclamation for Bayou Country. Whereas the Relay for Life program is the significant, uh, the signature activity of the American Cancer Society and celebrates cancer survivors and caregivers, remembers loved ones lost to the disease and empowers individuals and communities to fight back against cancer. And whereas money raised during Relay for Life of Bayou Country supports the American Cancer Society's mission of saving lives by helping people stay well and get well by finding cures and by fighting back. And whereas Relay for Life events helped fund more than 177.5 million in cancer research last year. Whereas Relay for Life happens in over 5,000 communities across the globe in over thirty-one countries. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Rosalind White, Mayor of Abbeville, along with the city council, do hereby proclaim September 8th through September 13th as Relay for Life Day in Bayou Country, encourage citizens to finish, to help finish the fight for cancer by participating in the Relay for Life event at QSA indoor facility at E-Rath on September 13th, 2025. Thank you for your role. Come on, let's come check a picture. Let's come check a picture.
This isn't my phone, sorry y'all. Hold on. Okay. Sorry, one tick. Sorry, this wasn't my phone.
Thank you all.
Have a good evening.
Alright, have a good evening. Item number two, Mr. Tommy Beiler, Superintendent of Schools for Meem Parish School Board Superintendent to discuss tax renewal. Mr. Beiler?
I'm trying to find my little thingy. Give me a second.
While she finds a clicker, first off, uh, thank you for this opportunity. Tommy Beiler, Superintendent of Schools of Meem Parish. Um, I do also wanna recognize one of my local principals. I've asked our principals to make it to meetings, so Sonia Robinson, my principal, and Harriet. I'm gonna roll through this as quick as possible because the presentation of number three is way more important. And the reason I get to share it is because of people who you're recognizing in number three. So I'm gonna move through this rather quickly. Um, you wanna just?
I can click it if you need me to, I'm just trying to get it, there it goes.
This is the first, uh, twenty-seven presentations that I will be making on this. And the most important part about anytime we have a tax renewal is getting the, the accurate information out. And it goes better way than people, people are here, the people who come to these meetings are informed citizens, so I appreciate, um, you coming out there. This is for the renewal on November 15th of 2025. Quickly, I'm gonna go through the history of the millage, the details, what it's all about. Um, the initial ask in nineteen ninety-six of the Meem Parish School Board went to the, to the citizens for a ten mil property tax, means one dollar on every one thousand dollars of tax. For these four items, transportation, instructional programs, roofing and air conditioning maintenance program. It passed in nineteen ninety-six with a seven one, seventy-one percent voter approval. In two thousand and six, there was no need to change it. We continued moving forward and passed with a seventy-four percent voter approval. In twenty fifteen, it passed with an eighty-six percent voter approval. I would love to say that we could do that again, but in the state of America today, I, I, I know that fifty-one is, is what it's meant for. So, uh, all I wanna do is make sure that you understand where we are on this. Nothing has changed. It is an absolute renewal. We're not changing any of the language or anything. Basically, what this millage does, it generates about two point five, three point five million dollars. This is a parish-wide, uh, millage, uh, based on the valuation of property that tax assessors offices. Uh, the ten mills, five mills is broken down for roofing and air conditioning, three mills for instructional, two mills for transportation. You can see the actual numbers there of how much it generates, um, for our school system. Just as a reminder, this is not an increase in amount collected. It's not a new tax, it's an, an existing renewal. The commitment that this money has been, and I wanna make sure everybody understands this, every single penny of this millage is being spent. Our commitment to transportation, uh, since during the mi, the duration of this millage since nineteen ninety-six, we purchased two hundred and ten school buses. We purchased about, uh, seven new school buses every year, overall about seventy in the ten-year window. Any bus you see on the road with an M on it, you see M whatever, that is the bus purchased with millage. We are currently up to M two fourteen. So we have purchased two hundred and fourteen buses. Our bus fleet I would put up against anyone, where, you know, buses are not the problem, but drivers are sort of there, but we have buses. So this is an absolute, uh, ask on, on this transportation of, of buses. Instructional needs, guys, technology changes as fast as we can. Um, the millage has helped us, we are now one-to-one device. Uh, we do some other monies. But one thing people don't truly understand is that there's the days of us having textbooks where you, first thing you did was look and see who had the book the six years before you. Those days are gone and they've gotten smart. It's now a digital subscription that you have to pay for every single year. And so our costs have gone up in instructional world. Uh, this millage that we use for this covers about a third to half of our instructional needs. The rest of that does come out of general fund. The other thing is our commitment to roofing and air conditioning. Um, since this millage has passed, we have brand-new roofs at all of our schools. We have new air conditioning. Each air conditioning costs anywhere from two to three billion dollars. We have now used the millage for a preventative program, which has been a major, major success for us. We're getting ten to fifteen years more out of our, because we've been proactive with the millage money. So that's the commitment to those, um, the same rate. I do want, and I messed this up.
There's a bad.
I want you to make sure you understand that, that all we can do is remind people why public support is so important, you guys know that with anyone. Not only does the MFP fund, which is, which is two-thirds of our funding, our MFP funds are affected by this, new initiatives with excess revenue and, and continue our programming. MFP with people want, I want people to understand, local effort. MFP is the minimum foundation program. We get X amount per kid in our school system. Local effort, meaning that we are willing to tax ourselves, draws more money. In this case, right here, three point five million is what we draw. We draw about another one point eight million in MFP money from the state because our citizens are willing to tax themselves. And so it, it's, I mean, it's a five, it's a five million dollar generation of funds that by supporting. Renewal is crucial for this. Um, safety, uh, that's not, oh yeah. Highlight, uh, because we've had the excess funds, safety and security has an all-time high. We have increased test auto officers, Raptor Safety App, single points of entry at all of our schools, cameras at our schools. Basically, we've been able, because we have a sustainable resource for maintenance, we've been able to use any excess tax money, any excess oil money, and we have put all, all of that money back into our school safety. You can't place a price tag on the safety of our students and teachers. And then our current programming, this has allowed us to start the French immersion program in elementary, it's now moved to middle school, LASHPA at rising, college and career campuses, ACT dual enrollment. These are all programs that we offer because any excess money we have, we're able to do that. And there's not much excess. All I can ask you is, is to consider it, know the facts. Can't tell you what to vote because that's illegal. So all I can say is, vote on the next day. The reminders, it's Saturday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Early voting is eleven one to eleven eight. And I just say thank you, and does anyone have any questions? On the board.
I don't. Thank you for, um, coming and making the presentation. I know it's a heavy lift, but, um, we should be more transparent. And I think, um, all of the government agencies are starting to see that. So I know it's a big commitment.
I have a question about, uh, buses, um, with air conditioners, that's what I've been getting a lot of calls about.
Since, since twenty twenty, all buses that we've purchased now have air conditioning.
Okay, so that's, okay.
Yeah, we, we have, we have priced out the retrofit. It would cost us seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to retrofit all of our buses on the road with air conditioning.
Yeah.
We're working on that, we're not there yet.
Oh, yeah.
But every bus that we've ordered since twenty twenty now have air conditioning. So your constituents will get it in time, it's just that's like last year.
I think, I think you need to remember while you're promoting this, I don't have to tell you, but it's a renewal and not an additional tax because
Yes, sir.
people really, really are tuned to that, they don't want any additional taxes. So it's a renewal, it's very, very important, right?
There are a couple of things with buses, we like to upgrade the cameras on our buses with the taxes, the, the left, the millage is not written that way.
Mm-hmm.
And for us to write it that way, we have to call it a new tax, that's not happening. Not on my, it's a renewal. And that's, we're gonna use it and spend it the way we always have.
But since you're answering the questions, how does those charter schools affect your given fee fund?
Ten thousand dollars for every student. Our budget got cut ten point two million dollars this last year. But we ended up in the positive. So I'm still proud of our budget. We ended up in the positive even with a ten point two, ten million dollar cut, between all in gas and, and the charge school. What we do is with the best public school we can, you can't worry about anybody.
Thank you, Superintendent. Okay, that concludes presentation number two. And presentation number three, as amended to recognize Sergeant Paul Hardy, retired Army, um, World War II veteran. Councilman, please, I'll shoot at the floor.
Thank you very much. On Sunday, I attended a luncheon at church in E-Rath following the services there. And, uh, when I got there, I saw there was a birthday party about to go on and I saw ninety-nine up there and I thought, wow, who is this? And I had the pleasure in distinct honor of meeting Sergeant Paul Hardy. And he said, make sure I'm, I'm not the Paul Hardy who ran for governor.
You are the Paul Hardy who once had Park Restaurant in Abbeville, right?
It goes way back in that. And, uh, so I think we're all, uh, very, very proud of all of our veterans. But I'll tell you, World War II veterans there, not too many left. He may be the only one in this area now, uh, that I know of. I didn't even know about him. And so he was never recognized and I thought we might do that tonight. I contacted the news media, they've already done, uh, interviews with him being aired. And, uh, very, very proud that this council can get to introduce tonight Mr. Paul Hardy. Sergeant Paul Hardy, served six years in the United States Military.
She's coming right back.
Yeah. Paul Hardy, would you like to join us up front for a picture?
Yes, please.
I don't have a proclamation, but I have something better and I love Abbeville, Paul, in love.
Everybody stood right there. Right, this, right two, one, two, three, and then he's taking one.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Anything you wanna say?
Thank you all.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on, new business, item number one, public hearing to receive comments from the public on the following proposed ordinance. Um, A, an ordinance to reapportion the districts in accordance with federal and state law. Uh, council, I need a, a motion to enter into a public hearing.
Oh, second.
Motion and a second to enter into a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in a public hearing to receive comments, um, on the proposed ordinance. Todd, you wanna make the presentation?
Oops, sorry, wrong bud.
Uh, first meeting in August, you considered a map and we prepared, we keep called option B. And I thought I would start with that map just to kind of refresh your memories. Uh, this is the map that was considered at that meeting, uh, which again we called option D. Um, you can go ahead.
Okay.
This map shows your current map with the changes required to get to option D. So as you'll note, there was a row of blocks that came from District A to District C and two rows of blocks going from District B to District A. So those were the changes made to go from your current map to option D. With that option, uh, these are the statistics or the, the data that came with that option. As you'll note, the total deviation is six point two nine percent for that option. At your August meeting, August fourth meeting, you passed a motion requesting that we attempt to reduce the total deviation. So in that process, we've developed another map, we would call option D two. And that's this map here. Looks very similar, but there are a few differences which are shown in the next map. So these red lines indicate the new district lines and the arrows show where the blocks might from District B to District A, from District A to District C, and also from District D to District C. So with these changes, the new data come.
Oh, sorry.
The new data shows that the total deviation with this particular option, option D two, is zero point five seven percent. You'll notice District C and District D, they both have the exact ideal population of two thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven. So this is the data associated with option D two, which I believe accomplishes your request to reduce the total deviation on that, that map.
Yeah.
Any questions? This is a comparison.
I'm sorry.
I'm gonna go back.
Sorry.
One more?
No.
Follow it.
This one?
Yeah, this is a comparison of D and D two. Again, just showing the total deviation going from six point two nine percent to zero point five seven percent. That's all I have, last any questions?
Okay. Council, do you have any questions for Todd?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Todd, great work by your team.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll now take new public comments. Any public comments and new comments on the current presentation? Please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon.
You're gonna make new comments, correct, not that we've heard already?
Correct.
Okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon again, my name's Akden Susi. I am an attorney with the Southern Palm Ridge Law Center. I have the honor of attending the Birmingham NAACP. I know this isn't the first time you guys have. I know this isn't the first time you guys have heard of me. I commend you guys for getting down to that one person, one vote. That's exactly why we brought that initial lawsuit. But you may remember, one of the other issues I spoke about was the racial J language. And there, if you look at the numbers, that it actually, the BVAS, the Black voting age population for District B increased, right? And the discussion of that last topic was, that is an issue that you all have to consider. One of the things I want to talk about right now is to remind you guys why you are redistricting. We came multiple times telling you guys that the community wants a fair representation, not only an equal population, but especially in not having a packed district. Those numbers right there, this is the first time I actually saw the map. So my question to you guys is, I hope you don't plan on passing the map today, being that this is the first time that the community has even seen these numbers. This wasn't attached to the agenda. So the community should have some time to look at these numbers in line. But seeing sixty-seven point five, that means that the black population is put into one district. You have other alternatives. I understand you might not want to do the pilot map, but that sixty-seven point five is an issue. One of the things you said, Councilman Campbell, last time, is that the judge has to decide this. I wanted to make it crystal clear that we don't want to continue fighting. We want to resolve this and make sure that everyone has the ability to voice their, 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 use their vote. But at sixty-seven point five, you are putting almost three-fourths of the black population of District B into that one district. So I absolutely don't pass this map. Allow the community to have that buy-in. And because you will see, when they see that number, they're not, so they're not going to support this either. So we're still wanting to work with you guys to pass a better map. We've shown that we can, but I do commend you guys for reducing that deviation, so.
Thank you. Free comments. Any other comments? Any other comments before we close the public hearing? Ms. Mitchell, would you like to come to the front, state your name for the record and make your comment? Any comments only?
Mayor, let me get you.
I'm not there.
Well, I'm here because this is the first time we've been, I'm part of the NAACP. I didn't understand that y'all did what y'all did today. If it would have been sent to us earlier, we could have reviewed the map. And we could have issues with, our issue would have been clear after what's going on. I don't like Jerry Manning, nobody likes Jerry Manning, but we just want to make sure that we have fair representation in District D, which we can take and unbalance that sixty-seven point five percent. So thank y'all very much for doing what y'all do, zero point five percent, bit five, seven percent. That's wonderful. But we want to unpack that District D and make it likely to be more fair and more equal. And I thank y'all very much for doing y'all job. I thank y'all very much for taking care of the city as you're supposed to. And like I said before, twenty twenty-one, me and twenty twenty-six, and I, I mean, twenty twenty-five, we pray that this resolves this year. So I thank y'all kindly. I thank everybody for being who they are and doing what they're doing. But we just don't want to have everybody in District D, just everybody that's packing that, that, that district. So thank y'all very much.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Mitchell. Any other comments?
Then we just travel.
Good evening.
Good evening. How y'all doing? I was going to say, I appreciate y'all, y'all work trying to get the map together. And to, what that attorney said and what was interesting, you know, we wish we would have had time to look at what y'all had done. You know, that we was taking consideration, you know, part of it. I feel that the community should just have a space, you know, because it affects.
The community is. They'd only do that if they ever said anything, nobody.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to re convene to the public hearing and re convene the regular meeting. Motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are now back in the regular city council meeting. Item number three, to consider an ordinance to reapportion the districts in accordance with federal and state law. Motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
We would need a specific motion.
Okay, I'm going to let, because we've discussed and heard on this item so many times in the last, as Ms. Cockrell said, and, and Ms. Mitchell said, since twenty twenty-one, I'm going to let the attorneys that represent the city guide us on what we need to do here. So we need to know what, what was just presented in the public hearing was, one, the motion to consider adopting redistricting. And you were, you saw two maps. The map that was presented during the last hearing, a last public meeting, and the ordinance committee meeting. And then the map that this council requested our consultants go back and do, which is a, 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 a map with a reduced deviation, which was the repetitive concern over the last meeting. So that's all I'm going to say. I'm going to let Jordan or Bart take the floor first.
So the agenda item is to consider an order, ordinance to reapportion the districts. If any council member has a motion they would like to make, now would be the time that you make it. For instance, you can make a motion to adopt their map. You can make a motion to adopt D. You can make a motion to adopt D-two. Whatever council member wants to make a motion regarding the adoption of an ordinance to reapportion the district.
I'll make a motion to adopt map D-two with point zero five seven deviation.
A second, ma'am.
Okay, so that, that's actually amended motion? So I will, we'll first vote on the amended motion, which has a specific language. All in favor of the amended motion? Well, let's do a roll call. I'm sorry. Hold, wait, hold on. Your call, floor's not for you yet. Hold on one second. So first, we're going to do a motion and a second to, for the amended motion. Uh-uh, I'm sorry, I'm losing. Okay, a motion and second to amend. Do we vote or we just take public comment first?
We are ready.
Okay, no, but on the, on the motion on the floor now.
You can vote.
Okay. All right, we do not allow public comment during this portion. It was during the hearing. This is the council only that speaks during this part.
Is that not over still under that part?
No, we closed the hearing. Yeah.
You can't, you can't make public comment in this part.
Well, that was what the hearing was for.
But after the hearing, can't you, until they come back?
Make one comment. Make, go ahead and make your comment.
This one, this one say thank you for making.
This is great. Say, say, Miss St. Julian, please say your name for the record. I know it, but.
Great, Miss St. Julian.
Yeah.
All right. I just want to say thank you for coming back to the table and pushed together, made the man from page down much, much more. Um, and just the part on the, you know, packing of the district. I think in time that will work. You know, we will, we'll work on that part because District D just moved over by one street. I just wanted to come in together and get that deviation down. That was a big step for you all, but it's still packed in District D. So just thank you all for all of that and good job.
Thank you for your comment. All right, so we have an amended motion on the table to adopt an ordinance to reapportion the districts in accordance with federal and state law, and specifically the map of D-two. Is that correct?
Well, I don't think it's an amended motion. We're just here, the agenda item is to consider an ordinance. But if a council member has a motion they want to make on a specific ordinance, I don't think it's an amended motion.
I did.
It's just a motion to adopt. I think Councilman Bruce Sore's motion was to adopt map D-two to reapportion the districts. So that's the current motion on the floor. It needs to be seconded or it can, or anybody has any amendments.
Any other comments from the council? Any questions for Board or for our attorney? No, ready to vote?
Thank you right here. Councilman, Councilwoman Bruce Sore, that is your district that's involved here. I haven't heard you comment about that.
Because.
Feelings are about it.
Because I stated, I went with the attorney. Last meeting, Councilman Campbell said, let's bring the map, the city map, and let's review that. I went, went in with the clear conscience, said with the attorney, because the concern was one person, one vote. Okay, and that's what I worked on with the attorney, to make sure that that would happen.
So, so what you're saying is you're satisfied with the map we're looking at now?
The map, the, the map that they asked at the last meeting, that we go back and consider.
Right.
And drop the numbers, that's exactly what we did. That's exactly what we did.
I don't understand why they were not notified till tonight. I understand to join forces with the city to make sure that that was, that was acceptable. So that's why I'm asking you, the district.
Yeah, I understand that.
I think I made it pretty clear when we, when we discussed it last time, that it is this council's job to redistrict. It's not the NAACP, it's not Southern Poverty Law Center. We have consultants that have been doing this for ages for all of the parish, all of the city, as well as other parishes. And so while, I'm not going to, I'm not going to speak to what they said, but while they would like additional, additional time to look at the map and bring back on the proposals, we've done everything required by law, including taking all of their comments from last meeting. This council, I didn't even sit in on the meetings, this council sat in to make sure that we brought the deviation down and have done everything legally that we are required to do, right? Jordan, would you like to speak to that?
Let, let me, let me finish because that is my district. And I want you to know, and as an audience and mayor and council up here, that at our last meeting, I need to be very clear, Mr. Campbell said, let's adopt the city's map. And what we will do is go in and take a look. And we did. Deviation was important. That number is what they were asking us to come down with. We accomplished that. And some parts, some streets in my district, yes, I lost that, but we got in just as close as we could. We worked diligently and hard, and I worked with compassion and I understood. Yes, it is my district and I've not one time paid attention. And that is why I told the attorney where they want those numbers. That's why zero point five seven, let's work with them. Thank you for asking.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else from the council have questions? All right. Roll call votes, starting at my left, Councilman Campbell. Well, actually, we need to start District A. Councilman Tony Hardy, same way we did it last month.
Yes.
Okay. District B.
Yes.
Councilman Bruce Sore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bruce Sore.
Yes.
Councilman Campbell.
Yes.
Okay, that's a unanimous vote. Motion passes. Item number four, to authorize the mayor to execute waiver and release agreement between the City of Abbeville and Salisbury Industries Incorporated relative to payment to the City of Abbeville for volleys damaged by Salisbury Industries Incorporated truck on eight fourteen twenty twenty-five. Boris, you have the floor, just give us one minute.
This is just some of volleys that were damaged and the party, as required, often when people pay a settlement, so to speak, they require you to sign, sign a lease. So we keep, we just can't go back and say, oh, we made a mistake, that, that amount was wrong, yours is. Like, once we sign it, then that ends that dispute over that particular answer, not anything into the future or anything like that.
Okay, motion and second is on the table. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, to approve the purchase of transformers for stock from Solomon Sunmills as Quelton falls to eight after hand twenty. Motion and second, any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, to approve the estimate from Bayou Chasing Supply Incorporated in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred and twelve seventy-five for Pete Noel Electrical Substation. Okay, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, to approve payment of estimate partial number eleven final in the amount of one hundred and five thousand eight hundred and ninety thirty-seven payable to Glen Legge Construction LLC relative to the Abbeville Downtown Streets and Project. Motion and a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, to approve payment of estimate for partial payment number two in the amount of nine thousand five hundred payable to Preferred Mechanical LLC relative to the water treatment plant improvements project. Motion and second, council, this is for lab tests that were done and we're, we're starting, starting that project off. Any questions or comments for Todd or me or? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, discussion regarding enterprise lease for police vehicles. Chief Hardy, you have the floor.
Yes, ma'am. I put copies of information that we gave Enterprise leasing. It shows our twenty police cars. Also, Ms. Riley recommended that we probably replace, she said seventeen of them, but what I, I recommend to the council is that we try to lease ten per year for the first two years and then go with that lease so we can renew our fleet. We have cars where almost everything is in excess of a hundred thousand miles, except the last new vehicles that were bought was under Chief Spearman's administration. The numbers are there in front of you. If you have any questions, I can answer them. They also have what the lease would start off as. This is because the city already leases the Public Works trucks and cars that they have.
So Chief Hardy, what do you currently have in your existing budget for vehicles? Do you know, Paul Campbell?
Right now, I think we may have around thirty, I'm not sure.
Okay, this is the first, I know that, I, I know that I walked in on the meeting when y'all were meeting and I would like to consider this for what we can take out of current budget and what we might consider for twenty twenty-six budget. But since I didn't have privy to look at this ahead of time, it would be my recommendation that you discuss it with council.
I see, that's all.
Maybe bring it back for future consideration and possibly look at how we can get it in this year's budget, what's existing in the funds, and then look out at the twenty twenty-six.
Yes, ma'am. We have, we have three things later, is on the label, so you don't know.
Yeah, in October, we usually bring the budget back. We have a budget meeting and then that one, we start discussing when we need to revolve, anything we need to revolve.
Twenty twenty are not in this right here. They are, they're still, or, you know, you're not going to say small anymore. Yeah, but it's three leads started.
And this would not, if we paid out a capital, it's a lease, so we would have to move the money. It would have to come out of the general fund. Well, we're not, we're not taking any, we're, it's just.
For the budget for next year and maybe start it this year and before the end of the year. That way we can use the funds we have remaining to start the lease. And then the next year's budget, we have enough to complete the, the lease. For one year.
And you just said that's not for all of these.
No, this is, I, I'm recommending we do ten at a time, where you have a current fleet that they can manage for us. We have no maintenance, all we have to do is do all changes. We don't have to worry about changing water pumps or anything because everything's under warranty, just like. See, just you go to us. You can give us a process that how much money we're saving eventually, right? I, I'm still not a hundred percent on this, but I am talking to them. They're explaining to me how with new three dollars on it, you're saving money because you're not doing repairs all the time. You have something that's current, the engines are fresh, they're not hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty, hundred and forty thousand miles.
What we do.
What would we do with, with all of this budget for repairs?
So what we, what we do with the city budget, you know, we don't, unfortunately, the current accounting situation, our current accounting system, we have another chief tracks his repairs in a spreadsheet, right? Don't you track them in a spreadsheet, but we don't have it in our accounting system like that. What we do with Public Works is we took, we started with a handful of them, whatever we were spending in capital outlay for expenses, we decided to take X amount of vehicles, the ones that were the oldest, with the highest maintenance cost. And we slowly add a few as we surplus and we start looking at our maintenance budget and moving. Instead of putting so much in maintenance, you move it into, into the budget for the lease, right? It takes a little bit of time to know what those numbers are. And so I think what we should do is, the chief and I will meet next week because we meet every other Monday. We can sit down and look at this, look at his budget, see, and then absolutely bring it back for consideration. But it's good that he presented it to you guys, so he knows that we are looking at this as an option, right?
If I recall the budget, the maintenance was pretty high on the minutes.
Yeah.
Especially with high mileage.
Yeah, and in Public Works, I think our maintenance budget was three, four hundred thousand dollars when we started the enterprise lease and we saved a lot from there, from the.
And I think that's where Mr. Campbell was going, that was asking that we are kept abreast with the savings.
Yeah. Yeah. It was. But it will take, you know, two years, you can't really see that number, but.
Well, Chief, is there surrounding areas using that, are they leasing like that?
Yes, she, she, uh, actually presented a, a four or five towns in Louisiana to do it. I think, uh, I'm, this is one of.
Bruce Sore, what, Bruce Sore.
Can I call what one, I'm not sure if they're still doing it, but there's several around here.
Other areas.
Yeah.
How is that working, because that's a lot different than, than city vehicles, these, these cars are moving pretty quickly all the time, is that working pretty well?
Cars are moving pretty quickly. What cars are moving pretty?
Police cars.
Moving where, you mean like actually?
All around.
Harder with those vehicles, I'm wondering.
Because they run all the time, four hours, four hour shift, sometimes they'll run eight, nine, ten hours.
Yeah, they don't turn them on during the shift in case of emergency.
Don't tell me you turn them off, it's, they're parking out behind the police station, right? If you're on the road, they're either patrolling, or they're making a traffic stop, or, or whatever, and then that's high mileage.
What, what I would like to know, it's not been an issue with the city vehicles, but it's gonna be an issue with police. I know we have had a high number of accidents in the units, I wanna know what happens when you have accidents with your officers.
You actually have some officers that don't qualify to drive a leased vehicle.
I can, I could probably name a couple of them. I'm sorry, it's not funny, but it's true, you know.
Because our, our officers are young, it, it, it says in there that you have to be twenty one to drive a leased unit.
Yeah.
We have to amend that or get them to work with us on bringing their age down. A lot of our guys are under twenty one.
Are you with, you have older guys, we get the leased vehicles and the ones that we still own, would you reassign some of the younger ones? Um, okay, I mean, I, I.
There's something to look at.
I'm glad to know that you're looking at it seriously, and I think we bring it back for consideration with, with budget numbers behind it, if y'all are good with that.
I will say, I will say, I mean, if you know.
Yep, any other questions?
And that stopping goal, ready to tear us up in ancient.
Oh, it tears up the bricks.
Thank you, Chief.
We're gonna have some driver training too.
Okay. Item number ten, to ratify the purchase of a new CPS server PC for the AWOS at the airport at a cost of six thousand, six hundred and thirty four dollars. The server was damaged beyond repair from a lightning strike power surge at the airport. Motion and a second, any questions or comments? This was a brand new server, we just closed out the project in the time the paperwork left, we, already struck by lightning. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries, um, and then we have item number eleven, discussion, discussion and possible action for eight oh nine North Lamar. Um, council, I'm gonna just cover this before you take any motion. Chris brought this to our attention late this afternoon. Um, Chris, I'm gonna let you speak on it a little bit, but we need to secure that property pretty quickly. You wanna cover eight oh nine North Lamar?
I'm gonna let the chief help me with this one, he, he's got the call yesterday, Chief.
Yes, six forty eight yesterday afternoon, we received a call, eight oh nine North Lamar, the structure was full of smoke. My guy got on scene, the front door was laid out, and some kids had thrown some fireworks in the house, and that's where all the smoke was from. We lucky it didn't go up, because they had some mattresses and stuff, and people that's been sleeping in the house. So we need, we need to secure it the best we can.
And you have repeated calls, it's not the first call you've had to that property?
I didn't have the chance to get in good, but I know, I think we've been there at least one time in the last couple of years, and this is a second.
Okay.
I want to make a motion.
Okay.
Who owns that property?
Hold on, let, let him make his motion in second, and then you can ask a question, go ahead.
I want to move to declare the property at eight oh nine North Lamar, public nuisance, it presents a clear precedent and immediate danger to the health and safety of the public and requires emergency action.
A second.
A motion and a second on the table, go ahead, Councilman.
Uh, you know, who owns that property? Uh, the guy is, I don't know the name.
Board has the paperwork.
Marion Sinigor and Raymond Bruce Sore. There's a list that is.
Yeah, I, I, I know that, one is deceased.
It, it has been adjudicated to the parish and the city multiple times, and it's actually, that property has been brought to the city council since twenty twenty three. What my recommend, long-term recommendation is going to be is, right now, we take action on what Councilman Horry stated, and let them go post signage and board the property up, and then at the next council meeting with proper notice, I think we need to condemn the structure, right? And so that'll be coming back, we can't do it without giving twenty four hours notice, we can't condemn it. So right now, it's just to take emergency action to secure it, so we don't end up with a fire there and someone losing their life. And then we'll bring it back in the next meeting to condemn it, if we can meet all the timelines.
Yeah, if the property owners decide that you want to make repairs, you'll make it livable again, how does that feel?
Well, right now, it's adjudicated to the city because they owe past liens and violations. So they have to pay that, all that off first, they have to redeem it, and I don't know, I would say that these two gentlemen would go inside and inspect, and Chris would need to give us a recommendation if he thinks it needs to be condemned, or can it be repaired? But that's not the motion right now, that'll be at the next meeting.
Those people own other properties, that's why I asked the question.
Are they all in that condition?
No.
Okay. Any other questions or comments right now? Is anybody from eight oh nine North Lamar here, I probably should ask that question, but I figured, okay.
This is, this is, this is, this afternoon.
Yeah.
Um, uh, several people stopped while I was out there at four thirty before I came here.
Neighbors.
One guy said he owned all the property around there, well, the niece stopped, and she cleared, cleared up on who owned it. And I think they're living in there, somebody's living in there. Uh, it's all eye open, braxis, that though, so we'll do what we gotta do based off of the law, and, um.
Secure it.
Secure it, yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'm gonna take, uh, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. That's it for new business, old business, there's none, Board is leaving, guys, I know he's not feeling well, so. Well.
Leave Board.
Okay, engineers, Todd, Mr. Jean? No, Kim? Okay, attorney, just go on, public works, sorry to Chris. Nothing, y'all have anything for Chris? Okay, um, Parks and Recreation Coordinator Byron is not here, right? He gave me a report, let me read it.
We have Kristen back there.
Yes, he doesn't normally do the reports, though. Okay, APRD QSA NFL Flag Football League Registration has closed, teams will be picked this week, and practices will start once rosters are finalized, games are expected to start around September twenty second at Como Park. We plan to have a six-week game scheduled with games being played on Monday and Tuesday of each week. Many basketball registration will be available online within the next two weeks. Sorry, it carries. And that's it for Byron's report. Um, mayor, I have a couple of things, I'm gonna run through them quick. This Saturday, September sixth volleyball jamboree, jamboree at AA Como. Uh, it starts at nine thirty AM, and there will be vendors, music, um, kids' activities, and car show. September eleventh, coffee talks, Karen Gilgo, Louisiana County Festival President, seven thirty AM to eight thirty AM. Uh, we are, we are, well, she says no time changes, normally at seven is that last, it's thirty minutes later.
Yes.
Okay, that's to kinda help a little bit with our people that help put it on who have kids, they gotta get to school, so seven thirty to eight thirty AM, Abbeville General Auditorium, one one nine North Drive. September eighteenth, Secretary of State, uh, Secretary of State, I'm sorry. Sounds on the Square, Clara Ray and bands, uh, and like the, uh, thing is a, a, where you can see the rest of the bands that are playing for our Sounds on the Square full lineup. September twentieth, uniquely used, uh, put on by our one oh four Million Rees Group and co-sponsored by City of Abbeville at AA Como. September twentieth, Cruisin' for a Cure, for a Cure Car Show, ten AM to one PM. Four H, one one zero five, the four H office at one one zero five West Ford Street. That is, um, what is the date of the one at, at, uh, Peanuts?
The, the last that, the twenty seventh.
We have one, I'm talking about a square two caution?
No, well, that's gonna be for the Christmas, the Christmas, we have one during the Christmas, uh, Cajun Christmas celebration. But we have one on the boulevard by J H Williams. I don't remember the date off the top of my head, when I read this today, I, I thought that was what this one was, but this is actually the Cruisin' for a Nor. She's gonna pull it up. Um, September twentieth, do you still have the, um, September twentieth, Magnum Square, Farmers Market, eight AM to one PM. September twenty first, TNT, Sickle Cell Riders Trail Ride, one PM to eleven PM at the Red Barn. And that is it. Okay.
Other one is on the twenty seventh.
Twenty seventh is the one at Mrs. Peanuts, Mrs.?
Mrs. Peanuts.
Peanuts, but just the whole, um, specialty on the President Boulevard.
Car show?
Yes.
It's a car show, yeah. Um, and that is it for my report. Police Chief, Chief Mike Carty, you have the floor again.
Definitely great, but, uh, just, we did do the inspection to date on the Mid Parish School Board Credit Union, that's the inspection, the guy took a lot of pictures, man, it, I had it as an email, I think I just didn't have it rolled down yet. It is a lot of pictures, a lot of recommendations of what to do, but it'll be about ten small items to really take care of. City building's in good shape, but this is what he recommends. And, uh, guy is very thorough, if anybody ever needs an inspector, this guy was, uh, recommended by, uh, Twilight Port.
Okay, so send us the report.
I'll, I'll send it to you in the thumb drive, it, it's a lot.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chief.
Uh, I was in the courthouse, and, uh, an assistant district attorney stopped me. Can you update us on evidence submitted to the DA or city prosecutor? Is there anything that the council can help with that?
This building is part of the.
This building is not gonna stall.
We're using it for more room, and this room, this building right here can be used for offices where I can use more of my building for, uh, evidence.
Okay, with Brooks and with VPSO, with video evidence.
We have video evidence that stays, and, uh, my lieutenant, Chris.
Okay, you're not aware of the problem?
No.
Okay, then, the assistant district attorney asked me to see if there was a problem, so that.
There is a list of evidence that they're all waiting for from APD, and that's probably what they're discussing, and the chief and I were in a meeting.
We already know about that.
And assistant DA, and I don't know that any of it, has any of that been resolved?
I believe about half of that's been resolved already, that's because the team being has a lieutenant now.
And if you need our help to not let people walk out without charges, please let us know.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Fire Chief, Chief Drew Mayor, nothing, topics for discussion, council members, um, Councilman Horry.
Uh, county festival.
First weekend of October, is it the third?
I don't know the dates. Yes, third, fourth, fifth.
First weekend.
I'll have you.
Okay. Councilman Pleasant?
Nothing today.
Councilwoman Bruce Sore?
I, I sure do, I wish the TV stations wouldn't have left. Happy to tell everyone here in our YouTube audience that citizens in the city of Abbeville are now drinking one hundred percent A rated water by the state of Louisiana. That does not happen accidentally. The Louisiana Rural Water Association Training, four hours of operator training, four hours of management training, Public Works Department, Water Plant Department, this administration. City is the best water you can drink. You can choose the microplastics in bottles of water, or you can drink the one hundred percent A rated water in the city of Abbeville. Very proud of that plant and the crew to get that rating by the state.
You can have the best water from the city water.
I only drink city water, the only time I drink bottled water is in this meeting.
Egypt, anything?
So. Thank you, council. That was a very long meeting that I've sat through, that class two or three times, I think three times now. Um, but it's a good class that I think everybody should, should participate in, and it helps us get our grade. Councilwoman Bruce Sore.
Nothing, ma'am.
No, Councilman Campbell?
What thing?
Yes, sir.
Sounds on the Square, if one of the bands that, uh, you listed don't show up, I have one on standby that's very inexpensive that would be willing to come.
There's only one person I won't approve there, and I'm sure it's not the one you're gonna recommend, but other than that, we're ready to go. And I told you, we'll work on it. We didn't get a Zodico band this year, we try to have one every season, so we're gonna try to make sure we have one for the spring. Chris, yes.
You're gonna need a volunteer next year to come to water class, hey, Councilwoman Bruce Sore was tapped out.
They did say, they need different ones, yeah.
I would like to go.
Okay.
Four hours during the, during the afternoon.
Okay, where?
No breaks.
It, it varies, this summer it was in Gato, and one time we had it in Abbeville. We, we are hoping to get it back in Abbeville at AA Como, but we don't, we won't know till they come.
I'll travel three hours.
I'll go.
They do recommend that we rotate out the managers, uh, with different council people. Thank you.
Still have E one water.
You don't have to take a chance, you just have to learn.